I I don't think too many other prices changed.
No.
Just added some.
Mm, we added. Now the way the um it's farm permit ten dollars per year and then we've got the farmers market. Did I word that correctly?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, farm permit we did that so we can keep track. Well, here we have.
Right.
I think there's an illegal jump dumping in the uh general bylaws, isn't it?
Mm.
Mm-hmm.
And just leave that as to become incentive. The bylaw changes, we don't have to change our schedule.
Oh.
Okay. Looks pretty good.
Yep.
But you.
That was everything, right?
Mm-hmm.
Sanitation maybe just spelled it spelled uh missing uh yeah.
On the new construction.
Just missed it.
Oh, yep, okay.
We hate that nickname, but sorry.
No, please, I'd rather not.
Well, this is good too, 'cause we can put it on the website that's accurate up to date. Why would entertain a motion then to uh
Mm.
accept the new fees as presented tonight?
Second.
It.
Okay. I think there was a motion, yeah.
But that was that.
Now I'll talk to you about setting up um I think what I didn't even think we need to publish this, but.
There was a procedure, I think you just read it three times or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, we us we generally read it three times. I don't know if I got it filmed right now, but it take.
I
It wouldn't hurt, yeah, it wouldn't hurt to just to send it out just because like uh they accepted tallies. Anybody that would change their fees, it's published, so it's.
Oh, it wouldn't.
Yeah, we should probably publish it that the Board of Health is, you know, we're coming for some kinda way.
If we can just put a public notice in paper, I can send exact where to put something on lines of um, you know, we've voted uh.
To change their fee schedule.
So yeah, and you know officially will be adopted, you know, on whatever meeting date we choose.
Yeah, three meetings for.
Yep. Um, you know, a full copy is available. I can try and figure out exactly where to send it to you next week.
That sounds like.
Okay, alright.
And then um we just have to pick an effective date. Probably once on that meeting we can pick an effective date if you want.
Mm-hmm.
What do you mean on that meeting? On the meeting that it's the hearing night?
The last, yeah. Yeah. We'll choose the date which will probably be like
Okay.
January first or something like that.
Alright. It's probably first of November. Yeah, it's probably easier, yeah, because um some of these we know now August first, so obviously and then these run out until December thirty first, would make sense to do something on the beginning of the year, it's not fresh.
Mm.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But we should still have like a well permit available. 'Cause right now we we didn't have that, right?
No, I created one. We do, we do.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean it'll be, yeah.
That's true.
We came up with a couple of applications.
They just won't be charged until this is.
And same thing with and same thing with the farm, yeah, we still have these, yeah, we're going to have them in effect, but we're not gonna just charge them yet.
Right. The fees as well.
And it's.
But we wanna do the farm permits now. We wanna be able to.
Mm.
Oh, yeah, did we put it? I don't think I put a date on that, 'cause I wasn't sure when those. So farmers farm permit, what do you want the date to be? Is it gonna be twelve thirty one or is it gonna be seven thirty one? You wanna do it the same as the stable?
Yes, same as the stable.
Alright, so twelve thirty one.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. I don't know.
That's another, is it? I was driving to Rehoboth the other day, which is similar to Dyton. Every other house is chickens.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Everyone has chickens and goats.
And you gotta go out there and and look at 'em, right? And note where they are, keep a record.
Mm-hmm. And where did they?
Yeah, she just has to identify it and have a.
Your 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 workload just doubled right there with.
Yep. Karen, inspection system.
I think it's gonna be more than doubled than you. Oh, yeah, you do with inspection and inspection system, I go as time. You go around and you go, oh, never knew we had chickens, so you have to turn around, stop. You want to go somewhere else.
Mm-hmm.
Or somebody foolishly publishes it and goes, I'm selling eggs. Ooh, I didn't know you wanted chickens, so guess what?
Mm.
Was.
So we'll have to come up with a farm permit application also. I mean, I can the stable permit tweak it a little bit, but if you wanna do it with me, so this whatever information you want is on there.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, way too way too people hear this one. Dollars or.
It's gonna be like dog permits. I mean, dog licenses.
At least the laws say it's not.
Yeah, but if something comes through, a disease comes through, you know, it's very.
For ten dollars.
That's right.
Or whatever.
God forbid we had an emergency, she was calling the animal phone.
Right.
You know where, put a call and put it notify, you know.
Right. Right.
And you're required, mm-hmm.
Right, and I'm required to.
So if you're required, might as you have to keep track of it somehow. There's this uh administration fee for that.
Right.
Right.
State's gonna come up with all these unfunded.
Mm.
Yeah, ten dollar they are. Yes, they are.
thing, huh?
So Stacy, maybe we need emails for everyone that has.
Yes.
Ten dollars and uh.
I'd like to put that even on the stable permits, emails. God forbid there was an emergency, you could go into your iPad and send out a massive, you know, uh evacuation, blah blah blah, move to higher ground, whatever.
Mm.
Yeah.
I don't know.
And just a massive.
I mean, I don't want people to, yeah, people go crazy.
No.
Don't move because we found bird food in your area.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Don't go in there.
Okay, I think I got that. Matt made the motion, Kevin seconded. All in favor?
All people. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I knew we were missing something. We'll uh we're talking about getting something published. It's it's actually just there's no timeframe, 'cause we really don't even have to publish it, but out out of uh, you know, trying to be transparent here, so we'll we'll post something.
Okay.
And um okay?
Sounds good.
We'll deal with that next week, Monday. Hazardous, also hazardous waste day. Uh, we did manage to get th three bids
Six three bids.
for November.
Yeah, there's there's, yeah, there's.
For November four.
So two of them have a fee, a setup fee, but they include it in their minimum fee.
Mm-hmm.
The top one, which ended up being the lower one, doesn't include it in their setup fee, but they're still lower than the other bits.
Yeah.
Surprise, Sterrycycle was usually expensive.
Clean Venture one of forty five hundred two, huh?
Yeah, it was on the s the second page I saw.
Event minimum. Event minimum?
Mm.
That's what scared me, the event minimum. I mean, if nobody shows up, we're still.
Still eating that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We did one in uh Freetown. Had we hadn't done one forever. We have forty five cars coming.
I've had more than forty five calls.
Oh, forty five residents.
I think so. I think you'll get forty, I think you'll get enough people, just need to advertise the the light hour.
Yeah.
If we could do one of those foam blast things that I discovered a thread about, like it's just gotta get out there. People want it and need it, but they just don't know about it.
Yeah, and then just do advertisements.
You know how the schools call when it's a snow day or whatever?
Yep.
The one call.
We we need something like that, even for, you know, don't forget to vote or annual town meeting, uh Raby's clinic, hazardous waste day this Saturday, don't forget.
Ah.
Yeah, we we can really get the word out, it's just um uh hopefully they take advantage of that.
Yeah, prices were the Sterrycycle, the cheaper o overall, right? As far as I could tell today.
Yeah, you guys have all three bits. It was, you know, some of them list everything, some just says by the carloads, so.
Mm.
And I think the last one, the Clean Harbors, um Steve had said that she was no longer available on the fourth, she could do November eleventh.
Okay.
They look like they're gonna be the highest.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I wouldn't really worry about that. Um doesn't look like Sterrycycle has a charge for half a four car. It's more by the item, which um
Yeah, we're gonna provide a.
could go either way.
Well, well, that's going to venture.
Oh, no, no, they do have uh by the car. They're more expensive though, I think.
Mm.
In venture.
I got the Stercycle as well, huh?
Not quite much, but.
Half car, forty seven.
Forty nine fifty in venture.
Yep.
And the four cars, uh half car is fifty cents.
Yeah, right.
So.
Then all seven lots.
That's the same.
It is funny.
PCB is like three hundred dollars less.
The same thing. Half car is ten pounds, ten gallons. Clean Venture, half car, ten pounds, ten gallons.
Yeah.
Do it like right on, except for the price.
If you look at a great across the lines, uh Sterrycycle's cheaper on everything.
Yeah, yeah.
PCB, the fifty five gallon drum is almost three hundred, so fifty dollars less. Tires will ask motor oil is almost a third the price.
Mm-hmm.
I think uh I'm through with Sterrycycle.
Yeah.
They're still good for the fourth and November fourth.
November date of the bill?
November fourth.
The fourth, um those were the dates, the fourth and the eleventh. We asked for the fourth when we uh requested the call ups.
Do I need to, would you have us send us before I sign this, is they uh copy their insurance and their mass hauler's license to operate in mass? They were.
Hazmat.
Yeah, Hazmat.
Hazmat endorsement.
Hazmat hauler. They were a last time. They've these are people I used two years ago, three years ago, whatever it was at at this time. Um, they were called PSC at the time, no, but it's the same uh
Oh.
person Amanda what they are, will be pronounced her name, so.
Okay, so you want a copy of their insurance and their hazmat hauler endorsement?
Yeah, they should be licensed in mass to haul.
Okay.
And I'm sure they are. But just to be on the safe side, I'm afraid of John for.
Okay.
Make a motion.
I didn't make it. You wanna make it?
Yeah. Yep, I'd like to make a motion that uh we go with Sterrycycle Environmental Solutions for household household hazardous waste day for November fourth, two thousand seventeen. And provided we receive uh the the two documents.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none or favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you say a time? Nine?
Uh, it's in the contract, nine to two. They will be there by eight thirty, that's the right setup.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then once we get those, we could sign it and then we could start advertising.
Yeah.
Okay.
Imagine that, hazardous waste day, like, how's it happen?
I haven't before.
Yeah, a few years ago.
I know, I'm just saying, I haven't had it a while.
The first one, the first one we ever had.
I know, I got I got some stain, a nice thing.
Turned into like a lot of water, all the stains all day. We we accepted latex paint, that was a mistake.
Yeah, latex would just be dried and tossed on the trash.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll we'll be announcing that as we go along to make people aware of what's acceptable or not, so.
We can put a notice together as to what is accepted and what would not be considered.
Wow, okay.
And that, we can make that available as.
Yeah.
Yeah, people are gonna have a lot of questions too.
That's gonna make things easier on you guys.
The the. Yeah, the big thing's the paint. People try to get rid of latex paint, which
Not necessarily.
once it's dried, you can put it in the trash. You can do that by letting it dry out or putting sawdust on it or
Give you the.
something like that, so. But again, November four. Times nine to something.
Two.
Nine to two. Health agent job posting.
We just need to roll on it, right?
Yeah, I think it's uh.
Also.
One.
Yeah, we just, they wanted to uh
The, nope, both go together.
Well, they were gonna approve our last meeting, we're gonna act on it.
We didn't. We didn't.
No, let's hope not to.
No, we were gonna meet that date and then.
We haven't.
Oh, right, 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 right.
'Cause we haven't done yet. I think we already do this a couple of times.
Mm.
Uh, including the building commissioner. Uh.
We stay in at twenty five hours a week or we can pump that up to thirty?
We stay over twenty five, I think was was safe there.
Yep. See where the needs go after a year to.
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought you put in uh C job description.
I did. It's.
Oh, C attached job description, okay.
Yeah, okay, I was gonna start, I thought I could do.
Alright.
Again, I would prefer to see someone who has the septic side of things over the restaurant side of things, because the cost and time to get squared away with septic is much, much greater than that of food.
I agree.
Much greater.
I can easily take that service safer, like food safety management.
One day class and.
Yeah.
And off and all the time, so.
Get familiar, so.
I'm gonna do the food on hogged stirrups.
Oh, yeah, I got it.
I'm certif. Mm.
There you go.
So I can help out a little bit. I'm afraid of dogs, so I can't.
Yeah, certi and she's certified too.
I actually, I'm gonna.
I'm certi I'm certif safe certified.
Yeah, to do an ins to do a food inspection, that's what you need.
Yeah, but I'm I'm certified too, but.
Yeah, we'll work it out, um.
Awesome. Guess get a dog.
Okay, let let.
By what on that?
Let's uh let's formally approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve the health inspector slash health agent job description and posting as provided in these two documents.
Second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Is there any good discussion? Seeing none or favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, okay. Motion carries. I think I'm gonna call uh unless you guys know, what are some good publications to advertise this in?
Some of those um.
MHOA, I would definitely post there.
Yeah.
MHOA.
Yeah.
The, yeah, there's a few, there's uh M M A H B.
Yep. Uh, MEHA.
MEHA, yeah.
Which one?
Was ME.
Um, M E H A, M uh Massachusetts Environmental Health Association.
Yeah.
E.
And then the last one, but that one's overkill.
I would do the Mass Municipal Association.
Yeah, Mass Municipal, yeah. So it's M M A.
It's gotta go in central register?
No, I think we just have to post it.
Well, legally, all you have to do is post it.
I know, I know.
But, but I would put prioritize out of those four, MHOA and the MMA would be the first two.
Yeah, I think MMA.
If they're the most looked at.
Yeah.
MHOA?
Yep, Mass Health Officers Association.
Oh, what?
And MMA, which is the Massachusetts Municipal Association.
We could put it in M H I, M A, which better, M A H B or MEHA?
Probably about the same as far as job posting.
Yeah.
Alright.
I know there's a cross associate with all those and if you spend any money, I'd go with MHOA and MMA, 'cause it's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's view.
Plus local.
Now, you gentlemen are going up to meet with this selectman.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure if I'm posting these or if Karen's posting these, so just you might wanna have those couple of the job description and.
Post them while.
Post.
Well, we'll worry about that when it comes time to get it up there.
Oh, alright. I wasn't sure if you were giving it to them.
Okay, we're just looking at the, we're just looking at the best avenue now, get the word across.
Just thinking, what what portion should we advertise so it doesn't cost us a lot of money?
They'll usually do, like, you can add a link, like, if they can get this whole thing posted on the town website, 'cause it should be advertised on the town website.
Yeah. Right.
And they can post within, this could be scanned as PDF and as an attachment, then you can do just a short blurb, you know, Town of Dyton's looking, you know, seek about health agent blah blah blah.
Auto health, yeah.
And then you can put in for full job posting and job description. And then you have the link and you click there and it'll bring them and open up the whole.
Yeah, right.
Oh, okay.
That's usually the way, you know, they'll have a couple sentences and then you click that and you can look at the whole shebang. Otherwise it gets.
And for.
Otherwise it gets costly.
Yeah, and for an example, we just, we can visit one of those pages and just see exactly the how short they are. It's pretty much just a quick narrative of.
And it'll usually tell you if if interested or if more information, call or email or, you know, give the address, the town hall, what else, whoever's gonna.
I think I'll just advertise in this first paragraph, yeah.
Yep, so you want the definition and then um you know, the twenty five hours salary.
Right.
And where to get more info, where to go find.
Okay.
And a deadline.
Yeah, a new deadline.
A deadline and really no phone, like, just by re you receive it by a certain date to either Rosin's email or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, it could go to Rosin, it should be printed out. I whatever the selectmen, it's their appointing authority.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I don't know if it's me or Karen.
'Cause I rather no, no phone calls.
No, it should, it should be mailed or emailed.
Yeah. A deadline, a deadline, uh, but people understand, deadline, have it submitted by then, that's it. And then when it's received, you stamp it received and anybody after that deadline. So.
Okay.
Can we do any interviews, uh, Odo Som?
We should be, yeah.
Yeah.
Should be, we should be involved.
At least the first round and if we pick three, who we get a decent number of applicants, if we pick two or three, who we feel would be best and then if they need to be the appointing authority.
Yeah.
If they want.
Then they can do the final.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but at least that way we've narrowed it down to who we feel is most appropriate.
See, we have the authority, but we don't, so.
Right. Essentially what like the uh the town administrator committee did, we weeded it out to the top few minutes and the selectmen did the final.
It makes them a little complicated at times. Wanna read the announcements? I think we'll be filming also the announcements, might be good. Wanna read?
Sure.
Okay.
Nothing. Alrighty, uh trash bags, shop disposal containers and recycling stickers are all on sale at the Board of Health Selectmen's office, or Board of Selectmen's office, sorry. Call five zero eight six six nine six four three one for more information. There are vacancies for the historical commission, land use committee and capital outlay committee. Also, the community preservation committee has an opening for historical commission representative and a possible opening for an at lodge member. Board of Selectmen is now on their summer meeting schedule. The normal meeting schedule will resume on September sixth, two thousand seventeen. The Dyton Lions Club Food Bank Distribution has new hours going forward. The hours will be eight AM to nine thirty AM. The next distribution will be July twenty second. There will be a town auction held at town hall on July eighteenth at twelve noon for town owned properties, which will include Van Geyzen Hall. For more information on the properties, go to Zekos group dot com, I'll swear it, Z E K O S group dot com. That's it.
Good job. We didn't set a summer schedule, they were too busy. Too busy for a summer schedule.
I know.
Okay, um but something else on my mind.
So the MMA, just so you know, uh, is ninety five, ninety five, ninety. It's um ninety five dollars for the first hundred words, because the town is a member of MMA.
Okay.
And forty five hu forty five dollars for each additional block of fifty words, up to fifty words. Um and that is for both
Both of them.
the print, the beacon and on the website, if you want just the website, it's seventy dollars for the first hundred words.
Okay.
And thirty five for each additional. And and HOA is.
But to be honest with you, I think they should be the ones doing the posting. I mean they're the hiring of the already.
We should be members of MHOA. If not, I would strike, it's just becoming a member, but it's uh seventy five dollars and it's, it doesn't really have anything to do, it's just, you know, posting that, you click on it, so it's, you know, you could have a half page.
Yeah. Oh, right, right, okay. Okay.
In the time being, we should be alright. We have Joe Pavallo.
Well, what you can do.
Yeah, Jim Agia has been assisting. I know he's going on vacation, respect him, I agree. Uh, we're good on that part, hopefully.
You do well, I agree.
Yeah, I know.
Freetown.
I think I do, I actually, Freetown, Freetown should be done soon. They hired someone.
They do. Alright.
So, I think uh my last day of appointment, I as I'm I'm only per diem helping them out, it's the thirty first.
So if they hired somebody, we might be able to reach out to them to for a protest. Your heart isn't that big, I don't think, the the to do a three hour protest for free, but.
Yeah, but I I if we're in a gym, of course I can help.
Yes, yes.
And then I don't know when the deadline for this is, but.
Well, this, we're gonna try to get it advertised per spot of next week, so.
So do you need a copy to take up to the selectman when you go? Do you need three copies or you like, I'm not sure what.
You can have my copy if that works, 'cause I have, I have the manual, so.
We just have to stress that now that Joe Joe's retired, workload keeps coming in, so we have to push this along. We, Jim has been great helping out.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I know, I I've been doing my part and Joe Pavallo's have been helping out, but we gotta move this along, because it's summertime, you know, all these perks coming in and uh.
And even if it was, even if you posted it Monday, you advertise it for a couple weeks. Um, even if you had to close, even say August first to make it easy. Close is August first. We have to sift through everyone that applied. Then we gotta set up interviews, has to be posted meeting, um.
This person might wanna give notice if they're not already part, look, 'cause they're kind of part time.
And then if they, it has to be a second interview with the selectman, if the other appointee, but all said and done, and then they give notice, you're looking September, not assuming this gets done tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's and if we don't get anybody that's gonna be qualified, that applies, then we're back darn all over again with the advertising, so it's.
There's there's, uh, I was talking about before, that there's must be people in town that are certified to do these. Uh, or do this, that uh would be able to help out in a pinch for but then they're gonna become town employees, right?
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, so we're better off just staying with Joe and trying to reach out to.
Mm.
Okay. Any other public input?
No, but just as an FYI, I will be leaving Tuesday to go on vacation and it's such a
Come on.
How you doing?
It's Sunday.
It's.
Um.
I didn't know you were on a vacation.
I don't usually, but I have two weddings in that week that we start in Vermont and end in Maine, so.
You deserve it.
Um, we'll be gone Tuesday after, we'll start, we'll probably afternoon time and we'll be back until Sunday evening.
Yes.
Yeah. Who's your backup?
Nobody.
You can't, uh, can we ever do like uh
I mean, I take telephone calls if I enjoy.
Somebody from another community just gets one and a backup?
I, you know, I probably could ask Rehoboth at this time, because Jane wouldn't do it for me. Um, I could reach out to him and see if he will do it. He might. Um.
'Cause I know Lakeville has
Right.
Lisa Lisa backs to um Dave, David, right?
Right. Right.
And um vice versa.
Yeah.
You know, we.
I've never had that because Jane wouldn't come into town, so.
We really oughta look at contracting with time.
Good luck.
We burnt, we burnt that bridge.
Uh.
Yes, we burnt that bridge big time, so.
Yeah.
Oh.
That.
No, you think even with different people reacting?
No.
It's not happening.
No.
Yeah, there was a little bit of
That bridge got burnt.
That was a little bit of us.
Even though I had nothing to do with it, man, he won't even talk to me. I had nothing to do with that, but that was, uh, yeah.
Long history with that.
Yeah, no, it was that we got. Yeah, no, it was, we burnt that bridge over there.
Alright, we'll figure it out.
I I will take telephone calls, if I can do it over the phone, that's fine, but for anything else, if it's an emergency, at least the public can hear us calls, I mean, after
When you leaving?
Tuesday.
Next week, Tuesday?
Mm-hmm. Week from yesterday, Tuesday.
Okay. So we're not looking for a backup, animal control, I would say.
I think, I think you you should try to reach out to Lisa.
Well, Lisa's that's kind of far away, but Roethlisberger, I'll I'll talk to
Yeah, she love, she's Freetown.
Yeah, she's Freetown. Um, I'll I'll talk to her, if I don't want to hold it, so if he's
That'd be good, yeah, right there.
If he's around.
Just just like emergency backup.
Yeah, just emergency.
'Cause anything, have like, uh we each have some someone in, I don't know who yours is in your town, but we all have a backup, I know, I've been backing
Wouldn't be bad, yeah.
I back up Berkeley, I back up each town, so
Yeah.
just in case.
I could do it. But force comes to worst, if I lost my, I think I've lost my certification.
Well, you never lose your certification. Um
We'll see what she says.
Yeah, it's it's a new guy, so hopefully, he's pretty good to talk to, so I'll let him and see if he'll, just emergencies, if there's
Okay. Alright.
Something going on there.
Actually, come to think of it, I might go on vacation next week too.
Three?
Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
And I believe deer calls still could go, I'll give them my son's phone number, 'cause that way he can, he's not going, so he'll be able to get those up. Hi, deer, hit the middle of the day on a Saturday.
Can I shoot?
Yeah. Really unusual.
Hmm. Sorry, did you hear this morning, on the side of the road in Swansea.
Oh, I was gonna say, please don't tell me, because nobody called me.
I don't know what street that is there. Um
Shop slot.
No, it's not shop slot.
No.
It's uh comes out to Hortonville. I can't think of the name of it, no. Starts out as Marvel, then goes to whatever it is.
Yes.
I don't know the name of it. But
I have one thing from inspector's reports. Um
Oh, forget about it, forget about it. This could be our last inspector's report ever.
Yeah, I know. So just a follow up, we had um three housing issues we're dealing with, two of them have recently corrected, I've sent out letters. Um I'm gonna just sign today, and probably have everyone's initials on there. Uh the other one, um a little more work to be done, we're just were sending out the notice. Part of that inspection, I have to contact the conservation commission, it was um, looks like some illegal dumping, that I'm gonna make them aware of, and uh forward it to them. And hopefully they take care of it, it looks like somebody was dumping in the wetlands, the complaint came to us, but it was obviously that this is gonna fall under their
Some little railroad bed, right, down there?
It's up near County Street.
Yeah.
So a lot of construction materials in there. But uh the individual told me, I'm not gonna give any addresses, but the individual told me they're well aware of what's going on, as long as I wasn't supposed to dump again, but I just wanna make sure I follow through and let the commission know that uh this is what I saw.
Okay.
So I'll send an email, I'll forward you the pictures and stuff, and maybe we just forward it to them.
Mm. Oh, sure.
Yeah, um and the other last thing is uh, I think we have one food inspection left for this. And then we'll finish up later on the second round by the end of the year, so we're in good shape, yeah. Uh I think Joe's working on a few different food issues and stuff, and we'll get, we'll get some follow up with that.
Yes.
I think that's it, all the swimming pools have been uh checked, we only had two, uh they're all set, and uh that's it.
Gotta hire somebody soon, right?
Yeah, 'cause like I said, the workload is here.
Mm.
That's what we have to stress, and you you never know, twenty five next year, you turn it to thirty, the thirty
Yeah.
Depending on what we see, uh what the person's gonna be doing, obviously they're gonna be helping Rosin, she's, she has a lot of stuff going on.
Mm-hmm.
Uh it's a busy office.
Okay.
Just keep talking away.
That's all you can do. Anything else, more anything? Than that? No more? What's adjourned?
No, uh recess.
Oh yeah, we got, well, we go up at seven thirty, but we can recess, alright, let's recess.
Mm.
Entertaining motion of recess?
Thank you.